All right, good evening, everyone. Apologize for the tardiness. So we're reconvening our open session. I don't believe we have any actions that were taken, but I'll ask the clerk. Any actions to report out?
No actions at this time.
Okay, we'll have the invocation. Trustee Jay's absent tonight, so we'll have the invocation by trustee Prendergast, and then I'll do the pledge of allegiance. So if you're able to, please rise.
So once again, the world has faced a mass shooting. And while it occurred in Russia, and maybe the politics aren't PC to feel lost for them, violence is violence. And to paraphrase Dr. Martin Luther King, "Some more stars were faded from the darkness and made it darker." And I think we should have a moment of silence for any loss of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, please join with me in reciting our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a conservative republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Prendergast, for stepping in. Now have public comments, and I believe I have seven requests for public comments. So I will, just to remind people who maybe don't often or attend our meetings every time, we do ask or restrict comments to two minutes. This is enforced. It's not indiscriminate. Everyone gets, everyone gets two minutes, including board members. So, well, if you are on to the two minutes, I will tell you, if you have not finished, please wrap up your comments. And I just asked if you can do that within a few seconds. That would just keep the meeting going. So thank you for that. All right, so I guess I'll do it two at a time. First up, Shadique Anderson, and then Shane Philip.
All righty. Is it good to go?
You're good to go.
Fantastic. All righty, good evening, board members and guests. My name is Shadique Anderson, and I'm the president of our chapter of the Student Veterans of America at Irvine Valley College. First and foremost, I want to thank you guys for your support and funding of our program. It definitely means a lot, and I want, excuse me, I want to give you guys a little bit of insight of what we were doing in our past trip to Washington, DC. We were able to work with Representative Mike Levin's office and, as well as Representative Young Kim's office, in order to essentially create a pipeline for veterans who want to be introduced in politics and stuff like that, so we were able to bring that stuff into fruition. In addition, we're able to give back to our community in partnership with Saddleback and Chapman University. We're going to be looking forward to doing beach cleanups, as well as working with Mission Viejo Pet Hospital, to continue to give back and volunteer for our community. So again, thank you for the support and the continued service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mine's not as well rehearsed, but, good evening, everyone. My name is Shane Philip, and I am the administrative coordinator at Saddleback Veterans Club. I spent four years in the Marine Corps as a motor transport operator. Saddleback Veterans Club would like to continue to update the board, as we did last month, on the amazing opportunities had at Saddleback, and thank you, the board, for your continued support. Due to your generous support of the Saddleback College Vets Program, three members of the Saddleback Veterans Club and one of its advisors were able to attend the 2024 Student Veterans of America Washington Week. This was held from 5 to 7 March in Washington, DC. This event allowed Student Veterans of America chapter members to make their voices heard in the heart of our nation's capital. Chapter members had the chance to share their experience as student veterans with their elected officials. The club was able to attend a joint session of Congress and Senate Veterans Affairs Hearing with the SVA President and multiple veteran service organizations, were able to deliver testimony to highlight key issues the student veterans and military affiliated students are faced with each year. The following days, excuse me, yeah, the following days, Saddleback Veterans Club was able to meet with Congressman Mike Levin's, chief of staff, and meet with Congresswoman Young Kim during three meetings, or these meetings that were attended by our sister schools, IVC and Chapman University. We were able to voice issues regarding how to improve the transition process for military to veteran student life. Another key meeting was with the chief of staff for House Veteran Affairs Committee Chairman Mike Boast, where we were able to listen and participate in Veterans Affairs issues. We were also able to take a tour of the Capitol Building and attend the final closing event at Boeing Headquarters. Lastly, the club would like to, the club would like to express its gratitude to the new Vet Center, offices and lounge, which has allowed veterans and military-related students to continue collaboration, meaning conversations, in a space they feel welcome. Once again, we cannot thank you enough for your support and appreciation for veterans at Saddleback College. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And well timed, thank you. Next up, we have, I'll call two, Kia Shate, Shate?
Shafe.
Shafe, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
My bad. And Heidi Ochoa. Yes.
Good evening. So here to talk to you about this proposed building, grand gesture that we're building, housing for students. Housing is not an issue in Orange County. Homelessness is not an issue. Affordable housing is an issue. Some of our students are dealing with that, some, not all of them. Some of the full-time faculty classified are dealing with that issue as well. But every single part-time faculty, part-time classified, is surviving it today. Your planning to spend billions will be ready in a decade. These people are suffering today. Don't look at them as tools of the trade. Help them. You can do it today. These are the people who spend years, if not decades, building, maintaining this community that we have right now. These are the people that they teach a class or hear, class or another class at a different college. Then some of them have to wake up 3:00 AM to deliver Amazon packages to us, so they can be in school by 9:00. And after they're done, maybe they go do DoorDash. That is a reality of a part-time faculty. You can help them. Lend a hand today. It's not that difficult. You have the money, you have the means to help these people. And if you go into technicalities, like the money from the housing come from tranche A, and the money for part-time come from that, you're selling something. We're not buying it. These people are not even surviving it. It's difficult out there. Please help them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so before Heidi, I'm just going to give notice, Tara Murphy and then Susan Akavon are the next two. Go ahead, Heidi.
Good evening, members of the board. It's so good to see you. I'd first like to thank you for all that you do to invest in our campus community. I see you advocating on our behalf, and I am grateful for you because you continue to choose to sit with this district and help us improve to better serve our students. I have worked for Saddleback Community College since 2006. As a very active member of the community, some might call it hyperactive, I speak from the experience of having listened to several faculty in our community that, that there are trends that are consistent within our faculty culture. Many faculty work overtime to survive, and many faculty choose to live outside of our district because of the local cost of living. Single income faculty members with children in particular tend to double up on their course loads and commute. Additionally, our hiring committees are frequently expressing concerns about the quantity and the quality of faculty recruits. Our faculty pools are small, and they continue to shrink. Part of this is because of the current political climate, which shows no signs of improving anytime soon. Teaching, quite frankly, is not a safe career choice when mental health statistics are on the rise. If I may, while some of us may have a deep pride for the city in which we live, and I say this as a 10-year resident of Mission Viejo, Mission Viejo is not geographically enticing and really doesn't carry the kind of reputation that you might think at first glance on a job posting. If we want to continue to build and diversify our pools, I ask that the district please reconsider increasing faculty wages. If we want to continue to build a culture of care, faculty need to feel like they are financially cared for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, members of the board. Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you for this time allowing me to give you my thoughts. My name is Tara Murphy, and I teach ESL at Irvine Valley College. Please note that I absolutely love teaching at IVC, and in fact, it's the school district that I would love to be at full-time. However, as an adjunct, I am concerned about the pay parity for a part-time faculty. Part-time faculty are, in my opinion, the heart and soul of the California community college system. As an adjunct, I must cobble together several part-time teaching positions to create full-time pay. As a result, this makes it challenging to join committees and be more visible on campus, making it more challenging to be a knowledgeable resource to my own students. This makes it equally difficult to be a solid member of my own family. I've been teaching at three different school districts during the semesters, trying to juggle the rules and regulations of each of the different school districts. It's difficult, to say the least. Completing flex hours, professional development, community of practice, hours at each different district, the adjuncts can feel stretched very, very thin. I'm certain that many full-time faculty recall these quandaries, and we all want to be the best, not only for our students, but for ourselves and for our families. I ask that you please consider seriously my comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Susan Akavon. I'm a full-time faculty in the ESL department at IVC and a very proud member of the IVC community. I'd like to note that the district currently operates on a DRAC funding model, which confines funding to the colleges and limits college presidents' ability to attract and retain top faculty, who are instrumental in maintaining academic excellence and fostering a dynamic learning environment. These are fundamental standards at the college. We have the highest revenue in the state, and the fact that we have one of the lowest part-time parity rates in the state is unacceptable. We should be setting an example as a district. Whether it's part-time or full-time, we should pay our faculty a fair wage, considering the cost of living, and honor equal pay for equal work. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for that. And the last request for public comment, Carmen Mara Hernandez. Just while she's walking up, are there any other requests? Anyone want to speak? No? Okay.
Good evening, everyone, board members, chancellor, public, colleagues, the union, classified, everyone. My name is Carmen Mara Hernandez Bravo. I teach Spanish at Sarma College. I have been here for decades, talking to you as a board trustee monthly. Today, I'm talking about my colleagues. The new faculty hired, they cannot afford to live in Orange County. I have met with seven of them, seven of my new faculty members. They live in Riverside, they live in Escondido, they live in San Diego, they have little children, they cannot afford to live here. That is not the life for us, who went to school, we prepare ourselves, we love what we do. This is not appropriate. We are one of the lowest, the lowest starting salary around our districts, around here. Just look at, please, when you go home tonight, look at how high is the starting point in other districts. We are very, very low, with a lot of money in reserve. It is not appropriate. Now, when we open positions, we have very few people applying. They cannot live here, they cannot afford, they cannot raise their children. We have a faculty member with twin kids coming every day from, from San Diego. Other families coming from Riverside. We are not going to have the best professors in campus if we don't start paying them what they're supposed to make. It is so embarrassing to be in a place where we do have the money. Let's, please, please, let's pay beginning faculty members like in other districts. And for everyone else, living here is a very tough place and expensive. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you for those comments. Now, we'll move on to oral reports, board reports, and we'll start out with trustee Dak.
All right, March was very productive, and also, I guess, towards the end of February. I'm happy to share that I attended the Gateway Building Ribbon Cutting and Grand Opening on February 28th. It was a fantastic event, and my first time in there. I know some other trustees may have gotten a tour beforehand, but it was my first time, and I was very impressed, and I'm glad we have a new student gateway, or gateway building, on Saddleback's campus. I also attended the Table for Ten fundraiser on March 3rd. It was an amazing experience. I don't think I will ever forget. I'm sure other board members will have a lot to say about it, but I just wanted to congratulate everyone involved and give a special shout-out to our culinary program here at Saddleback College. Amazing work. And then finally, I'd like to congratulate trustee that sits right next to me, trustee Prendergast, for receiving the Marion, did I say this, Bergren?
Bergerson.
Bergerson. Oh, I missed the S in here. Marion Bergerson Award at the Orange County School Board Association Dinner on March 20th. Congrats. And thank you for all that you do, not as just a trustee, but also as a fellow teacher.
Thank you for that. Trustee Prendergast.
Well, since you brought it up. Thank you. It is, it was, it was very exciting and very surprising, you know. If you were here last month, you know, I was kind of shocked that I was even nominated because I didn't, I don't know, I just didn't think I'd, when I knew how long it took Marsha Milchker to get it, I figured I'd have to be on here a lot longer. So I did, really do appreciate it. And then, looking at the program they provided, I just did a quick thing. This is the 50th year of the Marion Bergerson Award, and in 50 years, there have been six trustees prior to myself from a community college district that have gotten a Marion Bergerson Award, and three of them prior to me were from South Orange County Community College District, including our own trustee Milchker. So, so it really made it stand out even more, and, yeah, it's, it's still kind of hitting. And, and I do appreciate, again, the nomination, thank you. And I do appreciate trustee Jamal and Dak and for being able to make it to the event, and it was, it was very special. And I do, I also want to thank Letitia Clark, she's not here, her, the write-up she did for the, the application made me sound really amazing. So they were reading it off, and I'm like, oh, yeah, I guess I'd do that. Oh, yeah, I guess I'd do that, too. Oh, wow, I'd do that. So I guess there is some reward for wearing too many hats sometimes, so. I still advocate, just say no, but I'm not exactly the best example, so, thank you again. But I also wanted to highlight some other event that occurred the next day. We went, we, my wife and I, when we, when we can, when we have time, and it was our spring break, so we could and we had time, we liked to go to bar trivia. And we went on Thursday night at Hangar 24, and it was crowded, it was busy, and the, the only table, there was a foretop, there was a young couple sitting there, so we asked if we could join them, and they said, yes, please. We were horrible at this. We came in in like the middle of round two, and sitting next to the lady, she introduced herself as Brier, and then after a while, we, she said that she works at IVC and Student Services, and so I led her along for a little while until I finally let her know who I was, and then, yeah, it was, it was pretty funny. The recognition and the realization of who I was was kind of like, oh, my gosh, you drink beer. So, yeah, so it was, it was fun to meet someone. So if you know Brier, tell her I embarrassed her. Thanks.
All right. Thank you for that. Trustee Inman.
Along with other trustees, I attended the State of the District, the Irvine Valley College Gala, and Table of Ten, where culinary students and chefs made a wonderful dinner, raising money for the Culinary Arts Scholarship. But tonight, I'd like to focus on two events and individuals. First, I was part of a meeting and tour with California Senator Josh Newman. We discussed the nursing shortage and possibilities of how our colleges might be able to help. We also discussed supporting AB 247, Merit Sushi, I hope I did that right, kindergarten through Community College Public Education Facilities Bond Act. Because I taught almost every grade, from kindergarten to community college, I am pleased to hear that, of cooperation between the different levels instead of competition. Secondly, several of us went to the Orange County School Board Dinner Meeting. It was very exciting to see our trustee, TJ Prendergast, become one of the SOC trustees to win the Marion Bergerson Award. The award recognizes school board members who promote and enhance public education through leadership and community service. And quoting from that excellent press release, he referred to, quote, "Trustee Prendergast was named this year's winner because of his ongoing efforts to promote comprehensive services to students to include support for basic needs. His amplified advocacy to combat food insecurity and homelessness is celebrated through this award," unquote. And that is why I nominated him last month, and so happy to say, congratulations, TJ, we are proud of you.
Thank you for that. Trustee Riedel.
Well, I'm going to dovetail what was said. Congratulations, TJ. I'm very, very happy for you. I could not be there, would have loved to have filmed, like I normally do, but really, congratulations, and you do deserve it, really do. I did attend the Gateway Ribbon Cutting. I just want to say, I've never seen that many dignitaries from our community out there, and I would like to say an appreciation of our president, Stern, who really gave an excellent introduction and welcome to everyone there. You were eloquent, and it just made the Gateway Building nicer when we walked in. Thank you. The State of the District address was, it was awesome. We have never done that before. So much work went into it. Chancellor Barnes, it was a lot of work after I sat there and listened to all of that, and the, and I'd like to thank the people who helped you with the surveys and the calculations. I mean, a lot of numbers had to be crunched, and it was very nice to see that in print and to the public. Then we, or I really enjoyed my meeting, our meeting with Josh Newman, our state senator, who is the head of the Education Committee, and I'm just going to say, hopefully, hopefully, this college may be one of the first colleges, community colleges with a BSN program. I'm not saying it is, but I'm going to hope, and every night I pray, that it may be. All right, the Irvine Gala was wonderful, and it was fun. I really enjoyed myself. So thank you, everyone, and once again, congratulations, TJ.
Thank you. Trustee Milchker.
I'll be the second-last trustee to congratulate fellow trustee TJ Prendergast when he was awarded the prestigious Marion Bergerson Award. It's hearty congratulations for winning this monumental recognition and welcome into the Marion Bergerson Award Club, okay? And I couldn't be more delighted. I'm just very, very delighted. That's wonderful. So more incredible news, the Mars Rover team, and I'm the science, volunteer science advisor to the Mars Rover team at Saddleback College, made it into the finals. We are one of the, we are one of the 38 teams selected out of 102 applicants, and as far as I know, the only community college that made it in. The others were all four-year schools. The competition was the fiercest ever, and our team scored the highest ever. We recognize our hard-working Rover students for their hard work, their dedication, and their perseverance, and they will spend the next two and a half months on, on the rover, refining it and conducting advanced testing to prepare for the field competition in, in one of the most extreme and Mars-like environments on Earth, for miles and miles and miles. That's in Hanksville, Utah, who we'll be going to for the competition at the end of May. The Rover science team used Quizlet to, to prepare some of the questions they might ask them, and when I logged on to the Quizlet, I saw an IVC announcement of preview night, Wednesday, April 17th. Great idea, IVC, to put your advertisement on Quizlet for the students to see. That was wonderful. Other fabulous events I attended were the State of the Chancellor's, State of the District event, where Chancellor Barnes and President Jamal spoke wonderfully, the Classified Professional Day, where Chancellor Barnes and Desiree Ortiz spoke, and Desiree said, "The care in campus means we not only care for our students, but we care for each other." I just have a few other. Charter 100, where Chancellor Barnes spoke, where we give wonderful scholarships to IVC students, the IVC Gala, where I sat at the table of the facilities director, Jeff Herlbutt, and we had a, my husband and I had a wonderful time there. The IVC Lunar New Year Festival, that was lovely. The Table for 19, that was delectable and amazing. The Gateway Building Ribbon Cutting, the accreditation reports were fabulous. The Saddleback College Nursing Program is number one in the nation. And last but not least, Saddleback College ranked as a teaching college and has gotten many students from all over the state in the California Virtual Campus Exchange, so way to go Saddleback College as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you. So I've already broken my pledge not to keep everyone to two minutes, so I'll, I'll keep it, try to reclaim that time. I don't have anything new to add to all this. The Gateway Building opening, very proud, awesome moment, grateful the opportunity to speak, huge turnout, what an accomplishment. The Table for 10 was awesome. Again, the culinary program deserves strong kudos for that. I'm sorry I missed the IVC Gala. I was in Washington, DC. I heard it was a great success, and my good friend Lisa Kennedy Greenberg, I'm so sorry I missed it. I heard she was honored, so I wish, I wish, I wish I'd been there, and I should reach out to her, congratulate her. To my colleague to my left, what an awesome award, you know, to be in the same vein as Marion Bergerson, who I know, I got to know a little bit, you and I've been around long enough to get to know her. It was a special moment, and I was really proud to be there, to be with you and your wife, so congratulations. And then, lastly, we did have a State of the District. You truly had a kind of a big, big say in trying to get us to do something like this because we do so many great things here. And to tie it together into a kind of a day or a morning, a message, and bring it into, and deliver that message to our stakeholders, including all of you in the room here, it was very impressive. $7.1 billion impact on, on the economy. Chancellor Barnes, I know you put a ton of work into it. I thank you for that. I thank your team. It was really an impressive presentation, and because of that, now we have a lot of me-tos going on. A lot of the other districts now are trying to mimic us, and they, they are trying to do the same thing, which is okay. I told the chancellor, that says we are going in the right direction, so thank you. And so now, that was two minutes, sorry, I was going to reclaim some of the time. Student trustee Heidi.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'll join everyone in congratulating trustee Prendergast on behalf of the student body. We appreciate your contributions to our education. This month, I had the honor of speaking on behalf of my peers during Chancellor Barnes' first annual State of the District address, and I wanted to extend my gratitude to the chancellor for including me in this event, and to Letitia Clark alongside her supporting staff for helping to facilitate and organize the event as well. It was a very unifying experience to be part of an event with such an emphasis on community within our campuses and beyond. This past week was busy for our student government leaders, as both Saddleback and IVC spent their spring breaks advocating for the Reauthorization of the Higher Education Act, increasing the Pell Grant, and advocating for DACA recipients in Washington. I'm sure our student government representatives will expand on this a little bit later, but we are grateful to have the opportunity for our student leaders to take action and advocate for such prominent issues on a federal level. Election results were also announced for both Saddleback ASG and ASIVC, and I wanted to congratulate ASG's current chief, chief of staff, Christian Suazo, on his new title of ASG. on his new title of ASG President. Christian is committed to fostering inclusiveness and is already emphasizing the importance of effective policymaking as he strives to approve initiatives such as the Menstrual Equity Initiative. We will also be looking forward to the next IVC President, Claire Encarnacion, and the student trustee representative, Charlotte Clemente. I'm confident that these student leaders will continue to advocate for student needs, inclusion, and equity across our campuses in the following year. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. We'll move on now to a good segue into the ASG. We'll have to start with you, Christian, from Christian Suazo, Saddleback College.
Hello, hello. All right. Thank you, everyone. Good evening. For my office report, it's very similar to Caitlin Hitty's. We had our elections about two weeks ago. We had 422 votes cast, which is a very great increase in, in votes. On a personal note, I won president, so I'm very excited to be working. Thank you, guys. Thank you. I'm very excited to be serving with Saddleback's ASG to fight for Saddleback students. I'm excited to be working with President Stern next year, so that'll be fun. Our ASB stamp increased referendum from $10 to $17 passed with 56% of the vote. So, that'll be implemented next year. We just got back from our ASAC Conference in Washington DC. We had a great time. We are advocate, we advocated on behalf of the conference for reauthorizing the Higher Education Act, advocating to Congress to pass the Dream Act and to increase Pell Grants. Us along with IVC's delegation met with Senator LaFonza Butler's staff, Senator Alex Padilla's staff, Senator Mike Levin's staff, and Representative Mike Levin's staff and Representative Young Kim's staff. About a month ago, we had our Pizza with President Stern event, host with our Campus Life, our Campus Life staff, and it was a great success, great turnout, and very great food. This week, we are having our Abilities Week. With today, we had comedian and speaker Michael McCreary. Tomorrow, we are having a documentary about disability. And then Wednesday, we have a Unified Soccer Game and a speaker discussing about understanding and having empathy for people with autism. And then in the coming month, we will be planning a Pride Festival Week with Drag Queen Bingo. And that will be the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Turning now to Diego Victoria at Irvine Valley College.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to see you all again. And I'll join on with the, with the group of people congratulating trustee Prendergast. I don't think anybody in this room is surprised to see you win this award, especially the former students of Beckman High School like myself. So, still wanna thank you for, for that economics class that I was in back when I was in high school. So, well-deserving trustee, or, you know, how to get used to calling him trustee instead of Mr. Prendergast. But with that being said, our elections also wrapped up at, at Irvine Valley College. And we had over 640 students participate in our elections. This is all due and thanks to the Events Committee and a lot of people in the Student Life Department to really have a high amounts of engagement activities during our elections a week and really promote this, the importance of campus civic engagement. In addition to that, I will be joined by the incoming ASIVC president next board meeting. That is Clarice Encarnacion. And we are very, very excited for the next legislative meeting to welcome in all of the new ASIVC members. In terms of recent events, as Saddleback has already mentioned, we did participate in our annual Student Advocacy Conference. And I just want to give a really, really special shout out to our district CIO, Letitia Clark, and Dr. Amric Joel Hall and Zoradak Kidos from Irvine Valley College, who really support us, took care of us, and made sure that we had an amazing and, amazing and memorable experience out in DC. So, I really, really want to thank them from the bottom of my heart. And we spoke with five legislative offices, with the Office of Senator Alex Padilla, LaFonza Butler, Congresswoman Young Kim, Congresswoman Kitty Porter's office, and with Congressman Mike Levin. And we're, we're very excited to, to continue on this work of advocacy now and bring these skills onto the campus. And we also want to give a special thanks to Townsend Public Affairs, who James took an amazing job of taking care of us and really inspiring us and showing us what it takes to kind of work on the Hill and for some of those that want to pursue this as a career. So, thank you very much. And once again, congratulations trustee Prendergast.
Are you one of those who want to do that?
Yes, I'll actually be interning in DC this summer. So, I'll be, I'll be going away.
If you're gonna be around after the meeting, let's talk. Spend a lot of time there. Yeah. Okay, so I think next is IVC Academic Senate, Rebecca Becker.
Thank you. Good evening. Hope you're all doing well. And this evening, I wanted to take a little bit of time here to highlight the work of our faculty colleagues at IVC. And I wanted to contextualize it a little bit. And the way in which I'm going to do is in the work of the AI Task Force. And why? And it's because it showcases, again, the ability that our faculty colleagues have of looking at something that is coming up and it is so new and understanding the reality of the technology that it is going to have in the impact of our lives and that of our students and how readily we were up to the challenge to say, okay, let's go about doing something. So, since the inception of the Task Force in fall of 2023, we've been guided by clear set goals and guideline, excuse me, goals and objectives. And primarily, we were, we are working on developing and promoting literacy, AI literacy among our faculty, staff, and students so we can prepare them for the significant change to their personal and professional lives. We're also evaluating and implementing tools that we can use in our teaching and in the workforce as well. And we're also looking to address and mitigate ethical concerns related to AI, such as data privacy and bias, so that we ensure that our approach to integrating AI is responsible and aligned with our community values. I also want to focus a little bit more specifically on some objectives. And that has been the development of our AI Professional Development Program that is going to begin in fall Flex Week, where we're gonna have a speaker and then we're gonna have a series of workshops. We're also working on developing comprehensive AI usage guidelines and ethics and syllabus statements, which will be, we're planning on publishing them into our website, which will be launched in May of 2024 as well. I also want to give huge kudos to our faculty librarian Cheryl Bailey. She's created an AI library guide, which is comprehensive and it has a lot of resources and information for our students and our faculty. And that is on track to be completed in May of 2024. And lastly, I am excited to share, and this is just fresh, fresh news, that we are putting together a team of faculty and these faculty are going to apply for the AACNU Institute on AI Pedagogy on the Curriculum. And again, AACNU is the Association, no, hang on, the American Association of Colleges and Universities. And so, if we are selected, this team is going to be working next year with the institute. And we will be developing programs to effectively integrate AI into our curriculum. So, in closing, I would like to again express my appreciation and gratitude for my colleagues for working every day hard and creating these opportunities for our students and to you all for our belief in our mission. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I'm, it's really glad, I'm glad to hear you're taking this on head-on, AI. I know I find myself using it more and more every day. And the fact that you're trying to be proactive and, and ensuring the integrity of the, you know, teaching, but also to use it as a valuable tool, because it can be. So, that's, that's great that you're doing that. So, Saddleback College Academic Senate, Margot Lovett.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to spend, not my entire time, but a few seconds this evening to thank my faculty colleagues. I thank you for the devotion and commitment to your students that you demonstrate every day, both inside and outside the classroom. As we all know, teaching is not just a profession, it is a calling. And I have the privilege to work with some of the most dedicated and caring individuals who do this work. I am very proud to call them my colleagues. And I would like to acknowledge the work that they do here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Next up is the Faculty Association, Melanie Hayery.
Good evening, everyone. I'd first like to congratulate TJ as well. Congratulations trustee Prendergast. We've come a long way, haven't we? I'd also very much like to thank all the faculty that came out tonight. Thank you. Our faculty work very hard and I want to thank them for coming out and sharing their thoughts and their feelings about the issues that we face. We look forward to resolving the issues that they brought up. One of them being equal pay. I know this district values equal pay as tonight, one of the resolutions in the board agenda is about equal pay. So, I look forward to resolving that. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for that report. I don't believe we have the IVC Classified Senate here. Saddleback College Classified Senate, Chantel Gill.
Good evening, trustees. I want to celebrate and share that last Monday, we held the second Saddleback Cares Roadshow, focusing on wayfinding and a tour of our beautiful campus for our employees. We are thrilled to share that we had 50 classified professionals attend, where employees have the chance to participate in a behind-the-scenes tour of several buildings, such as the Fine Arts Complex, the Science Building and the Robotics Program, and the Gateway Building. It was a wonderful opportunity to connect with fellow colleagues, learn history about our amazing campus, and visit many buildings where we may not all work in and see day-to-day, but that are nonetheless critical to student success. Many classified professionals expressed that the in-depth tour was helpful and not just your traditional tour pointing at buildings, but an inside look of our campus. Folks had the opportunity to go backstage and see the costume shop, even Partak and Trinon costumes, the set building shop and so on. Our colleagues shared that the in-depth tour made people feel impressed, excited, and more connected to our campus, reflecting on all the great spaces where amazing work is done for students every day. We also celebrated our district-wide Classified PDE Day last week with the, this year's theme being Growing Together. We had wonderful support from Chancellor Barnes, an amazing keynote from our Saddleback College Vice President of Student Services, Jennifer LaBounty, where she shared her professional journey from classified professional to vice president, as well as a couch panel with IVC's Director of Student Recruitment, DJ Santiago, IVC's Director of Annual Giving, Karen Orlando, and Safety Manager in our district, Sarah Sparazza, sharing advice also as former classified professionals. We're looking forward to holding elections next month to support ongoing leaders at our Saddleback College Classified Senate. And we greatly thank and appreciate all of you for your ongoing support to our classified professionals.
Thank you for that report. Next up, CSCA President Scott Green.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Dr. Barnes. I want to acknowledge the great job that Chantel and ACE and the entire planning team of the Classified Professional Development Day. It was absolutely amazing. It was a great turnout. And all of them are very good, but this one was actually special and we really, really enjoyed it. And we want to thank Dr. Barnes and trustee Milchiker for being present and supporting the Classified Professional Development Day. This month is also Women's Month. And so, CSA has done a really good job as far as supporting women in CSA. K through 12 is the majority of our constituents and our CSA members. And so, the fact that we have so many women who are right at the front lines when it comes down to students. CSA has done a really good job in being able to provide for those who wish to actually move on as far as being able to teach our students as well. So, we have four different ways of being able to provide funding assistance for people who want to continue their education and actually if they wish to become faculty. We've always encouraged that and CSA has always been supported behind it. We very much appreciate the women as far as what they've done and accomplished in history. And we certainly really appreciate everything that they've done within CSA. They are the backbone of our organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Thanks for bringing up Women's History Month. All right, I don't see POA and I don't believe we have any requests for, from board members for a report. I'm sure everyone's disappointed we don't have a public hearing. Now, we'll move on to resolutions on cue to our clerk for item 6.1, Women's History Month.
Thank you. The first resolution is for Women's History Month. Be it resolved by the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees that March is designated as Women's History Month and requests that the faculty, staff, administrators, and students of the South Orange County Community College District observe March as Women's History Month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. May we have a motion, please?
Motion, motion of trustee Prendergast. Is it you, trustee Rydel?
Did you tell me the second?
I think trustee Rydel had the second.
No problem.
And let's go ahead and vote on the resolution. Motion carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Next up is item 6.2, Cesar Chavez Day.
Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees for the South Orange County Community College District recognizes March 31st, 2024, as Cesar E. Chavez Day of Service and Learning and encourages student, faculty, and staff participation in events or activities that honor the life and work of Cesar Chavez. May we have a motion?
Motion from trustee Rydel. Second. Second from trustee DAK. Let's go ahead and vote on the resolution. The motion carries on unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. The last resolution of the evening is the item 6.3, Equal Pay Day.
Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees for the South Orange County Community College District recognizes March 12th, 2024, as National Equal Pay Day to recognize the full value of women's skills and their significant contributions to the labor force, to acknowledge the injustice of wage inequality, and to join efforts to achieve equal pay. May we have a motion, please?
So moved. Motion from trustee DAK.
Second.
Second from trustee Prendergast. Let's go ahead and vote on the resolution. Resolution carries unanimously with a student trustee yes vote. We're now on to Board of Trustees Chancellor, item 7.1, Board of Governors, Classified Employee of the Year. Do we have a motion?
Yes, so moved.
Motion from trustee Milchiker. Second from trustee Prendergast. Did you want to say anything about this?
Sure. So, this is, this is the Classified Employee of the Year Award. And so, every year, we have an opportunity to nominate a classified employee to the state chancellor's office, actually the Board of Governors, for, for the award. And so, this is the first time we were actually recommending a classified professional from district services. So, Judy Perez is the one being nominated for her good work in supporting student success, obviously behind the scenes, but nonetheless, supporting students, right? And so, we're very grateful to be nominating her for this award.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. The motion carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Okay, we're now on to 7.2, trustee request for attending conferences.
So move it. It doesn't say where this conference is, though. I looked at everything and I couldn't
This is general authorization.
I didn't see the, the location. I just thought it was an ACCT conference.
Okay.
It's okay.
All right, so we have a motion from trustee Milchiker.
Mm-hmm.
Second.
Second trustee Prendergast. Any discussion? No, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 7.3, Triple CT Board of Directors Election. Okay, we have this discussion every year. So, I think we can have a list of up to seven. My recollection? Yes, seven nominations. Any requests for?
I, I picked seven, but
Okay, trustee Milchiker, you're recognized.
The pick, the people, the ones I picked were Julie Shore from Grosmann, Kuyamaka, Nan Gomez, Heitzberg, I know her. She's from Kern Community College District. Barbara Calhoun, I know her also. She's from Compton Community College District. Deborah, I, I, Kada, Yvette David, Bernardo Perez, and Yvette Davis from Glendale CCD. Those are the seven I picked. I don't know if anybody has the same ones.
Most of those are incumbent. I looked at those, too.
Yeah.
Okay, does any- Okay, does anyone have any modifications? Or is that to her recommendations? No? So you want to put that in the form of a motion then, to move it?
Anybody disagree with this, or?
Well, I saw some negative nods that there was no disagreement.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to nominate these seven trustees to serve on the CCCT Board in Sacramento. And I noticed that there's nobody from Southern California applying this, this, this term, so.
I think we've set forth nominations in the past unsuccessfully.
Over and over again, over and over again, yeah.
More success with Marion Bergerson than we did with this award.
Maybe someday, you never know. So should I name the names again, or do they have them?
You got them? Oh.
Okay.
Oh, was that six or seven?
Seven, I named seven.
So we can have up to seven. We don't have to have seven, but I think it's considered appropriate to have seven, but it's okay.
That's what we were told before, that we should pick seven. That's, but anyway, we could do whatever we want, really. Okay, it's Julie Shore from Grossman, Cuamaca, Community College District. Nan Gomez, Heitzberg, from Kern Community College District. Barbara Calhoun, who's, who's really fun, from Compton Community College District. Deborah Ikeda, from State Center Community College District. Am I going too fast? Okay, Yvette David, from Glendale Community College District. Bernardo Perez, from Ventura Community College District. And Yvette Davis, from Glendale Community College District.
Didn't you say Yvette twice?
No, they're, they're two different, oh.
There's two Yvets? There might be.
Yeah, so there, there was just one, yeah, there's just one.
Okay, so how many is that?
So there's six. Does somebody else have?
Do you want to add somebody?
Did you mention Deborah?
Turn on your mic.
Deborah Ikeda, I did mention. She was also honored by ACCT, actually.
Hortensia?
I didn't mention her, but if you'd like to.
Yes, I liked her. She's seven.
Okay. Okay, great. So we'll add, we'll add her.
Okay, so now we have a motion for seven trustees to go on the Triple CT Board. Is there a second? Second from trustee Dack. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. Motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 7.4, Board Policy Revisions for Review and Study. Do we have a motion?
So moved, but I have.
Do you want to ask a question? Okay. A motion trustee Prendergast. Is there a second? Second? Second from trustee Dack, and then a question from trustee Prendergast.
Just a couple, actually. One, a statement, and then a question. So on the 4103, the Work Experience Education, I, I'm really excited about this. I think this is awesome. You know, having two daughters that went through work experience at the UC and the Cal State. The fact that, I honestly didn't know we didn't already have this, so. So this is really great that we're giving these students these opportunities for credit for work. And then I had a question on the admissions, 5010, admission of special programs. Just curious about the change on who approves specific criteria for admission of these programs. And seeing that it's changing from the college president to the chancellor designee, just curious what the impetus for that is, and is, is just going to be, is it just semantics that the designee is probably going to be the president?
Yes, we were bringing it kind of in, trying to get all the policies the same so that it's chancellor designee, but for all intensive purposes, it'll probably be the president. Or it could be the vice presidents of Student Support Services even. So that's kind of, we're kind of doing it more broad. Chancellor designee would allow a little bit more flexibility.
Is there a danger or a concern that a chancellor would override or do something that the college president may or may not have wanted? Like, is it, is it?
If you picked a poor chancellor.
A bad thing or a good thing that we're taking it?
If you picked a really bad chancellor, that would be danger.
If we're, if we're taking it out of the hands of the president, so the college that's actually impacting, I feel like there's a, I don't know, hairs bristled on the back of my neck on that one. Not to say that, again, it's.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, as, as was mentioned, you'll start to see the chancellor designee, and I know the league recommends that as well, but I think at the end of the day, I mean, in the spirit of being inclusive and transparent and collegial, the chancellor, whether it's me or someone else, would be working with their teams to make sure the right designee would be making the decision.
And if I make her put earmuffs on, will you say anything different?
All right. All right. We've got a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory, student trustee yes vote. We don't have any presentation or discussion items, so we're moving on to our consent calendar. And as usual, I'll ask for any pulls, items that trustees want to pull out. Nope. Okay. Yes, or no?
Just number nine, I wanted to make a comment.
Nine?
Point seven.
Point seven? Okay. Any others? All right, can I have a motion to, for the balance of the items? Motion from trustee Prendergast.
Second.
Second trustee Dack. Let's go ahead and vote. The balance of the consent calendar items, absent 9.7, are approved unanimously with a student advisory yes vote. Now we're on to 9.7, trustee Rydell.
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment. The Orange County Workforce Solutions that were in, that were in our packet to review, that has to be the most thorough, outstanding memorandum I have ever read. And I actually read it. Well, that didn't sound right, but, but I'm honest. At, at any rate, it is absolutely terrific. You know what, some of the words that I remember, it said streamline, it said one-stop center, prioritizes. I mean, all the words that you want to, a student to hear. And it also included training. I mean, to have a, this is huge, but to allow the training, I thought it was marvelous. Yes.
All right. That's a nice positive comment.
Yes.
And, did you want to say something?
Briefly?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Just that it is such a complicated agreement because of the number of partners involved when you create a one-stop for somebody to be treated as a holistic human being, to have all of their needs met in one center. And by the way, we are the training part. That's us.
Really?
Yep, that's great. Looks great. Okay. Do you want to make a motion, trustee Rydell, to approve the item?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
9.7. Is there a second?
Second.
Second trustee Dack. Let's vote on the item. The motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. We're on to, sorry, 10.1, the Award of No-Cost Implementation and Transition Agreement for Bookstore Services and Revenue Agreement for Bookstore Services at Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College with Barnes &amp; Noble College Booksellers.
I have some questions.
Okay. Do you want to?
I'll move approval, and I have some questions.
Motion trustee Milchiker?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, did you move it?
Yes.
Give me a second.
Okay, yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from trustee Dack, question from trustee Milchiker.
Yeah, we're, we're changing from Fawlet to Barnes &amp; Noble, it looks like. And I see it's ranked higher by the committee, and it was an 18-page contract. So I congratulate Vice Chancellor Gable on, on putting that contract together. But I'm, I'm kind of questioning how it will work. Does the program we are approving now take place prior to changing from Fawlet to Barnes &amp; Noble? The colleges can opt into Barnes &amp; Noble First Day Complete Equitable Access Program? Can you please explain this? And how does it provide students with the print and digital materials via the district learning management system? And do they get the print materials online? And then how do they pay for these materials? There's a lot of little questions, but this is all kind of like how it works. I don't, I didn't quite understand how it worked. Do, do you know, or does somebody?
So it will be implemented. It won't be at the same time as Fawlet. So we're transitioning away from Fawlet to Barnes &amp; Noble.
Okay.
On that, to answer that question. And then your other question was?
Like, supposedly, the colleges can opt in to Barnes &amp; Noble, what they call the Complete Equitable Access Program? And apparently, that means the students can get their materials right away. And I didn't know if they get them, it implies they get them through the access, some kind of college access, by the district learning management system, or LMS. So do they get these things, like, online, or do they, or else it said they could also, if they don't want to do that, they could buy the book?
Right, so that's going to be something that we are going to be investigating during the implementation phase on whether or not we're going to implement that. The rates are different for that program, you know, versus a regular program. So as they're working through the implementation, they're going to look at the pros and cons and determine if they want to enter into that one.
Okay, so the, the colleges are going to decide that. Okay, okay.
Okay, I just want to mention, just, there's other colleges and districts that have this equitable access program. So it does give students, like, earlier, quicker access to their books, typically online. But the good part is that typically you can opt out if it's not, let's say you don't need all of those books or resources, and so you could actually just go buy a singular book if you want, or another resource.
Okay. And, and then it says something about, how do the students pay for the materials? Let's say that, that they, they signed up, like, I took an accounting class, and the, the book was like $150, you know, because you had to get, get it with the, the online material as well. So do they automatically charge the student for that? Or the, the student has to, like, sign up to get, to get the book?
I, I think we're going to investigate in our own district, but it's just like, just like any, any course that they would take even now. They could, you know, whether they have financial aid, or they buy it in a different way. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, mostly asking if, if, if the students pay, pay for the materials.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, the students will pay for it. So it'll be up to the students when they're registering. If they want to go directly and buy the book online, there, there should be a link to the course when they're registering, to the book that is required for the class. And then they can go directly to Barnes &amp; Noble to see the book, and they can purchase it that way if they want to.
Okay, so they have the option of doing it either way. Okay. But, but the colleges are going to decide if they want to use that option at, at this point, I guess, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, great. Now I understand it a lot better. Thank you.
Okay.
I, I had a question.
Yeah.
I don't know if, maybe this is part of the confusion, if I'm reading it right. It sort of indicated, but not 100% clear. So these are going to still be bookstores on campus in the present locations, just like modified in some way to be more conducive to their business operations? And how they deal with stacking and so forth? Okay. So the student can still come to campus, get books. Would they still, would they be able to also go to a Barnes &amp; Noble location nearby? Well, I would assume, well, there's one of them in the, in the, in the district.
Yeah.
No, typically, the, the Barnes &amp; Noble stores don't always have the textbooks that are required for the students. Sometimes they do, depending upon the textbook, but that isn't something that's guaranteed. So they'll have a website that's available. They can come onto the store and do it that way. It's typically how it works. You know, one of the nice things about Barnes &amp; Noble is that the rates are lower than what Fawlet was charging. They also have a larger inventory of used books and rental books than Fawlet did, so that'll be an advantage to the students as well.
Are they also a little more competitive with Amazon as far as? Because I know, having kind of trustee Milchiker's experience, but through Concordia, when you're getting books and you're like, you want to be a good consumer, you want to find cheapest option, you don't always get exactly the right edition or the right things if you go outside. And, but if it's significantly cheaper, you sometimes are like, you know what, I'll figure out the three words that are different, and I'll be okay for the $30 I saved. So I'm just curious how competitive they are with Amazon.
I'm not sure how competitive they are with Amazon. I think you'll still have, you know, they can go elsewhere and potentially find it cheaper. But Barnes &amp; Noble is cheaper than Fawlet.
Yeah. I, I saw the, I saw the graph that you had on there that showed that, that it was the least expensive of the four options that you looked at. So that was good. And I guess you have to use the ISBN number to, to get the exact edition of the book that you need, you know. But, but you can go online and find, as, as trustee Prendergast said, it's cheaper on, on different websites sometimes. The students will have that option if they want to.
Okay, any other questions? I think we can vote on the item. Motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote on to Human Resources, Academic Employees, and Academic Classified Administrators, Managers, Personnel Actions, Adifications.
I have one change to this item. I need to pull an item. Exhibit A, page 1, A, number 2, A. So A2A is being pulled off of the agenda and may be resubmitted.
Okay, the 2As being pulled, and then everything else is remaining the same?
Correct.
Okay.
Moved as amended.
Motion by trustee Prendergast? Second from trustee Inman?
There's two, two.
Did you have a question?
Two people are retiring. Anthony Tang is retiring Dean of Business and Industry after 16 years and 10 months. And Chief Higa, Patrick Higa, Chief of Police, is retiring after 10 years. So thank them for their service for the district. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. All right. So we need, what's that? Yeah, a second. Yeah, we need a second.
Second.
Okay, second from trustee Milchiker. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. Okay, the motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee abstention. We're now on to 11.2, Classified Personnel Actions.
No changes.
No changes. There are motion to approve 11.2.
So moved.
Motion trustee Dack. Second from trustee Inman. Let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries unanimously, and it's student trustee abstention. Now on to 12.1, the 2025-2026 Academic Calendar. Is there a motion for approval? Motion trustee Inman?
Second.
Second trustee Dack. Any questions? Oh, okay. Let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Now on to our information items, 13.1, Staff Response to Public Comments from the prior board meeting, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College speakers, the monthly financial status report for the district, and the facilities plan status report. Now have reports from our governance groups and the administration, and we'll start off with Chancellor Barnes.
Thank you so much. It has been a busy month, as we have heard earlier. So I'm not going to recite all of the places. I think I went to all of the places where you all were in the past month plus. But the ones that I want to call out first, I just want to thank everyone for your participation and engagement with the inaugural State of the District address. It was, it was kind of challenging trying to find the sweet spot because we had external guests and then internal guests. But at the end of the day, we wanted, I wanted to be sure, and we wanted to be sure, to showcase all the great work of our district and our colleges. And sure enough, I think we were able to do that. So thank you all. I know a lot of you were speaking that day, so thank you, thank you. And then the other event that I want to call out is Classified Professionals, Professionals' Day. So thank you so much to Chantel for the invitation, and to Ace as well. It was fantastic to be able to be in community. I was there in the morning with you, and you could feel the wonderful, warm energy of our classified professionals. So I was really happy and grateful that our classified professionals were able to gather in that way with one another in community and really engage in professional learning in that community, in that, in that community setting. So thank you, thank you for that one. And then, of course, I want to also thank the wonderful trustee Prendergast for, congrats for, on getting the award, well-deserved. And that was another setting where there was a lot of great energy in the room. And I was like, oh, my gosh, he knows a lot of people. Because they were like.
Because they were like, TJ! And so it was like really beautiful to be able to be there and to see you earn that award, and of course, to meet your wife as well. So congrats there. And then, of course, it is Women's History Month. So thank you to all of the wonderful women in the room for all your hard work that you embark upon every day. And I know that when you show up to your offices or your classrooms or wherever you work, it took a lot just to get there that morning, right? Because there's a lot of things that many of us juggle, so thank you, thank you. So again, so many other activities that I participated in. But, oh, the final thing, you're not timing me, huh? So that's great.
Why aren't we timing?
You're over.
I ran out. But this is actually to thank the board because we were talking earlier about a lot of the legislative activities. So just know, I want everyone just to know that this board works really hard to advocate and support our colleges and district at the policy level. You know, things like we heard about the BSN, the Bachelor's Degree in Nursing. There was a lot of advocacy for the Pell Program and other bills. So this board works really hard behind the scenes for our students and our employees. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you for that report. Let's start with Saddleback College President Elliot Struck.
Good evening, congratulations, can't say it enough, trustee Prendergast. We are all very proud of you. I do want to do a very brief shout out to all of the faculty, Classified Professionals, and managers who have led our guided pathways adoption over the last five years. This past week, we attended the last of our six workshops at the state level where we have learned, and not to our surprise, that we probably need to stop calling it our initiative in a framework and start seeing it as just the way we do business and a lens with which we see our college and its operations. So a special shout out to the people who joined us for all of those workshops and led this. But also to mention specifically Chantel Gill, our Academic Senate President, who joined six managers who attended this workshop that included a district holiday. So thank you, Chantel. Thank you for all the work that others have done as well.
All right, Irvine Valley College President?
Thank you, President Jamal. We are anticipating and are ready to host our Arts Village Ribbon Cutting Ceremony on Wednesday, April 3rd. We will begin sharply at 4:00 p.m. I hope you are as excited as we are. We will start with a brief ceremony and the ribbon cutting. But what there, where there is primarily a lot of energy is in the open house. What we have is a wonderful open house scheduled immediately following that brief ceremony. We will have our IVC student ambassadors taking individuals to the various different rooms. And it is there where our faculty and students will showcase their talent and the use of those spaces. And in essence, I would say, bring to life those classrooms. So for example, in the music and dance, we have in 10 different rooms a variety of performances from piano trio, barbershop quartet, marimba, harp. In the two dance studios, African dance and drumming, you will see a demonstration of the aerial arts. And then in the visual arts building, Interactive Media Arts will do a projection demo, painting, classroom art class demo, printmaking, ceramics, and so forth. And then two of our faculty are going to do a mini performance in the recital hall with one of the beautiful new Steinway pianos. And then, of course, we are going to have our student art exhibition in the new art gallery. So we look forward to hosting you all. So far, we've gotten a very strong number of RSVPs and community partners and members who are joining us. So we'll see you on April 3rd at 4:00 p.m.
Excellent, very excited about it. All right, Vice Chancellor of Educational and Technology Services. No report, thank you. Vice Chancellor of Human Resources?
Just briefly, Chantel, I have heard nothing but high praise for the Classified Professional Day. I know there's a lot of planning that went into it. Please extend our gratitude to those that put in the work. It was a fantastic day, and thank you.
All right, Vice Chancellor of Business Services?
No report.
No report, well, that, thank you all. That will conclude our board meeting, open board meeting tonight. We are recessing into closed session at the moment, or momentarily. And I don't, unless you want to hang around, I don't believe we will have any items to report out. So this will conclude our open session for the evening. Thank you.